I'd like to call this order, or this meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, we can start with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to call this order, or this meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, we can start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
How come you didn't say it?
Say, did you say it loud? Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three public hearing and the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
No move for both, sir.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, additions, subtractions from those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. Members of the public are invited to comment on any items not on the agenda. Five minutes per person, time limit, please. Comments relating to specific items on the agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. Do I hear any comments? Yes, Diane.
Diane Farr. Um, I just want to make sure I understand about the parking lot that is adjacent to the township building. Um, I understand it's going to have shrubbery, it's going to have lighting, and there'll be something in the vicinity of, what, twenty-three parking places, right?
It's still to be determined.
Something like that, that's not... My question is, um, I asked what the time, the posted time would be for parking on the lot. And if I understand correctly, and I'm happy to be corrected, there is none. So you can park at any point for as long as you want, anytime.
So that's something the supervisors are gonna have to look at. We're very much in the beginning stages of this project. Um, they're working on, uh, they met with the engineer and they're working on having him present some plans probably in May and then maybe put that out to bid. But we did, uh, have a discussion about the fact that they're gonna need to do something to prevent people that don't have off-street parking from just leaving their cars there for a great amount of time. Um, and then they'll have to talk about all the rest of that. So we haven't kind of gotten that far yet.
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay, next, any other citizens' comments? No, see, you don't have any up there, right? Okay, not hearing, or not seeing any or hearing any, let's move on to new agenda items. The state recently passed Act sixty-five, which requires the posting of agenda items twenty-four hours before a meeting on the township website and which only allows items to be added to an agenda after a vote by the board of supervisors. If the board has had items they wish to add to the agenda, this would be the time to discuss that. Are there any new agenda items that need to be added or want to be added?
I would like to add an agenda item. I would like to propose that we waive our grass and weed ordinance for the month of May, i.e. no-mo-May, as the state college borough has done to benefit pollinators. And, uh, also actually your grass goes a lot better if you let it go a little bit before you cut it the first time, so I would like to propose that.
Okay, I have, uh, I have a proposal to add that to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of adding that to the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Was that a for or against?
I said, well, what was it supposed to say?
Well, nothing, okay. It passed, how about we put it on, uh, let's see, let me look here where we're at. Yeah, let's get back to where we, right after we allocate funds for a day in town. We'll put it there, so it would be L. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we're gonna go to township business. And first on that is the announcement of an executive session. Uh, the board got together on the twenty-ninth of, of March, uh, to discuss, uh, the vacancy of our township's, uh, manager. And we basically discussed, uh, coming...
You don't have to say what you discussed.
Okay, we, we discussed that, how's that? Do you like that?
Just saying met for personnel management.
We're gonna, we'll talk about it later, but we did that. Okay, next on the agenda is Waldenheim LLC Minor Subdivision Plan. And I think Todd, you're gonna present that, correct?
I can. Uh, February tenth of this year, staff received from Penn Terr Engineering a minor subdivision plan for the Waldenheim property located south of West Crestview Avenue. Uh, this property was developed with condominium ownership and a land development plan was previously approved to allow the construction of two houses, plus a swimming pool and pool house. Now, the property is thirty-nine point four-one-eight acres in area and is owned agricultural and natural areas. Uh, the purpose of this plan is to adjust the location of the building pad for two ninety Waldenheim Lane, the only structure of the three not completely or currently under construction. Uh, two ninety Waldenheim Lane is the house proposed to be built at the terminus of the long driveway through the property. Uh, the issue, the issue with adjusting the house location is related to the repair and buffer regulations. The applicant seeks to reduce the width of the repair and buffer from fifty feet on each side of the stream to thirty-five feet in two locations totaling point one-four-seven acres or six thousand four hundred and three square feet in area. The applicant proposes to mitigate the reduced area with a total of point three acres or thirteen thousand sixty-eight square feet of new repair and buffer area adjacent to the existing repair and buffer on the property. Uh, the mitigation is slightly more than the two-to-one ratio required by the regulations. Um, staff has completed two reviews of the plan, the second of which is, was included with the agenda, as well as two plan sheets showing the areas of the repair and buffer to be reduced and the areas of repair and buffer to be added. A few comments remain as a result of the second review. On the wall behind you, the, the plan on the left side, uh, is a closer, a more close-up version of the upper, uh, repair and buffer area in purple. Um, you can see, uh, those plan sheets are the same that were in the agenda packet. I highlighted, uh, the, the areas that are, uh, proposed for mitigation in the dark gray. Uh, John Sepa, who's on this call, uh, from Penn Terr Engineering, highlighted in gray the areas that are, uh, sought to be reduced to thirty-five feet. Uh, the second sheet on the right, uh, on the wall is a more blown-out view that, uh, shows more of the lower area than the upper area. There, there was no one sheet on the plan that showed, uh, both, uh, areas for mitigation at any scale that would be, be able to be seen from the audience or on CNET, so that's why I provided two separate copies. Uh, staff's recommendation is to move to approve the Waldenheim LLC Minor Subdivision Plan, contingent upon satisfactory completion of the comments from the March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three memo of the principal planner and the comments from the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three letters of the township engineer and the zoning officer.
Okay, um, do I have any comments or questions for my call?
Motion with most for discussion.
You wanna move, make a motion, I have a motion to move for discussion, any, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Well, I would congratulate them on a well-done repairing buffer reduction. This is what a reduction should look like.
I agree with that. Anybody else have anything? I've read through the comments, I didn't really see anything that was major. Bud, do you have anything you would want to do?
No, I, I don't have a problem, they actually, uh...
I have trouble visualizing where this is going up the mountain.
Did you ask me?
I didn't ask you, I said, do you?
Oh, I said yes. Well... Subjective, and, uh, even though we call for fifty, a lot of research says that, that thirty-five would be sufficient. Uh, depends where it is, what is, what I am gonna be interested in, there's two streams around either side of this house. And when we get some heavy rains, it's gonna be interesting how that is handled. Regardless of the repair and buffer, but, uh, if they follow repair and buffer rules, twenty-five feet or thirty, thirty feet is okay.
Well, I think, you know, my con, every time, I mean, we, we ran into the same thing on some other properties we've done over the years. As long as, as they get the total square foot of a repairing buffer required, whether it's adjacent to the stream or in the stream's bed, I, I'm, I'm happy with that. Because, you know, most repairing buffers, uh, filler ring comes in the first, like, eight, ten feet, about ninety to ninety-five percent, and then it's, goes out from there, it goes down, but, uh, I, I agree with Danny on this. I think they did a good job on this of, of putting the, uh, extra space in, on the plan, so...
I, I noticed that, uh, I very, after, I've really looked at this hard for the first time since we've been here. They, their secondary sewer is gonna be interesting, just look at it a long way from their place. Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge.
They have to find around a secondary drain field, uh...
They're gonna be a challenge if anything needed.
But he shows himself.
Yeah, oh, they're there and, uh, but, uh, it's gonna be a challenge.
John, I have a question. On the sheet to the left, visually I see repairing buffer on both sides of the first house. Is that true?
Are you asking me or John?
Yeah, you, you.
She's asking you.
Yeah, he was asking you, Todd.
This one? The house that's in?
Yeah, I think there is repairing buffer on both sides.
On both sides?
It's difficult from the, to tell from the plan exactly where the boundaries are. I don't know if John wants to provide some additional input in that or not.
John, do you wanna add anything?
Yes, the, uh, the, uh, stream on the upper side, uh, plan upper side is actually a very small stream that disappears back to the ground.
Okay.
Uh, shortly below the house.
Where does the stream on the lower side come from?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The, is there a stream that on the lower side of the home also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, intermittent streams, yes.
Mighty, mighty comment, it's come spring, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, it's spring.
Mark or John, or Todd or John, I'm sorry. Am I correct that the purpose of the repair and buffer is not to handle, um, water flow during a high-rain event, but rather to control the, um, uh, nutrient and other, other chemicals getting into our watershed?
Yeah, the, the reason for the fifty-foot, uh, area on both sides of the stream is to provide area for water to infiltrate back into the ground, uh, before it gets to the stream. So a lot of the, you know, the bad stuff that we've talked about previously, uh, doesn't get into the stream. Uh, there, you know, the, the township engineer, Jerry Northridge, has been here several times in the last year or so to talk about the benefits and the, you know, the, the science behind the repair and buffers. The, according to him and according to what we discussed whenever we adopted the, uh, regulations, and I think Dennis was on that committee whenever we did that, the thirty-five feet is really important, even though, you know, a lot of stuff does happen in the first ten or twelve feet of it. The thirty-five feet is important and is recognized by DEP as being essential to the proper functioning, uh, of a, of a repair and buffer. Anything, anything that you, uh, allow less than thirty-five feet actually hampers the function of the repair and buffer, according to DEP. Uh, so, you know, the fifty feet was the minimum that, uh, I think we found anybody was doing for a repair and buffer and a repair and buffer ordinance when we, uh, were talking about, uh, this in the committee. Uh, and, you know, the repair and buffers, if we, as we discussed in the past, are as wide as two-hundred-and-fifty feet or more in some ordinance. And so we're, uh, we're on the low end, but we're, we're right where DEP is saying we should be to provide protection.
Nigel, you have anything you wanna add to that, or you good, or?
No, I'm not.
Okay, everybody good? Uh, then I'll, I'll, uh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of supporting this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next on the, uh, agenda is Contract twenty-two oh-one, Mary Elizabeth Street Culvert Repair. The township was notified in twenty-twenty-one that the culvert under Mary Elizabeth Street had a crack and was deemed structurally deficient by Penda. The township was informed that it must be replaced, that we must replace the culvert as soon as possible. In ensuing two years, the township worked with its engineer, Larson Design Group, to identify options to repair or slash replace the culvert. The board ultimately settled on slip lining the entire length of the culvert with a new substructure. The township will, will purchase a substructure off of the Co-Stars contract from Contech Engineering Solutions. The substructure cost is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Contract twenty-two oh-one is for the slip lining and related construction associated with completing the project. Four bids were received from the project. The low bid was submitted by Hogan's Heroes, doing business as J-Five Construction, in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars. Larson Design Group received the bids and recommends awarding the contract to them. As a reminder, the township will use our money, funds to pay for the project. We also have two grants through, through the county for the project, Act thirteen money sixty thousand and County Liquid Fuels funding forty-five thousand. The township will also be reimbursed eighty percent of the project cost through the twenty-twenty-four Center County tip. Do I have a motion to, uh, approve that?
I'll move to award contract.
Okay, I have a motion to approve that, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, question, the eighty percent of reimbursement?
Yes.
Is that eighty percent of two ninety-nine?
I need to confirm that with, uh, Randy Albert, I'm not sure if it's...
Or is it eighty percent of one twenty-eight?
I'm not sure, it should be the entire thing. So the entire project cost is the one twenty-eight plus the two ninety-nine, which is four twenty-nine.
Okay.
So, and I'm not sure if they're gonna take the grant money that we're getting from the county, which is a hundred and five thousand dollars off the top, and then reimburse eighty percent after that. I'll confirm that with Randy Albert, up at District Two.
Yeah, the Act thirteen of Liquid Fuels is one oh, one oh five, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, this, and I would add that this is in much slower than what we had thought it was. We originally thought this would be more like a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project, so we're pretty happy with the bid results that came in.
Start time is after school?
Yes, yeah, we put in there the warning notice to proceed until after school is done because we don't, with the extra traffic on Mary Elizabeth Street, we thought it'd be easier if it was done after school. So I think school's out June seventh, and that's when they can start after that. And we have the two temporary construction easements that we needed to fill the temporary roadways to get around. The traffic will be maintained through the entire project, it will never be closed, but we'll be able to get through.
Mary Elizabeth will be open all the time, okay. 'Cause I, I didn't see any traffic control signage kind of thing, so...
Yeah, it should take about two months for the project to be complete. Most of it'll be done, obviously, underneath, they'll put the sub, the substructure is being made by Contech, uh, Solutions. And we actually signed that last year and they've been sitting on it for us, 'cause we have no way to store it, 'cause it's so large. It'll come up, they'll, the contractor will have it delivered, put it in underneath the subs, underneath the structure, and then they'll be shooting concrete in underneath to slip line around it. It'll be a pretty neat process.
Yeah, I do, I have, uh, well, first off, we're winning, winning better with Hogan's Heroes, and I suspect that, uh, if anything, TV show, they're pretty good at making tunnels underground. I would think, I would think. Uh, two red flags have come up with, um, that I have concerns about. Um, on their bids, uh, the low bid to high bid, there's a lot of money left on the table there. But the low bid, uh, let's go to the, uh, in the middle, it's a Class A cement concrete. CY, I don't know what unit CY was.
Cubic yards.
Was it?
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards?
Yep.
Okay, there's no legend on here. Uh, they have at a hundred and fifty, and everybody else has it about the same, fourteen, around two thousand dollars.
Yeah, our engineer did go through the bids and did confirm and double-checked all the numbers with them and made sure that they had the numbers right.
I'm not ready to, unless we can perhaps, I, I don't, I don't think that, I would not, I, unless we can get some other information on it, I'm not ready to accept that one. Also, with the non-shrink grouch, cubic yards, twenty-four, hundred and fifty dollars a unit, everybody else has it at two thousand, or two thousand, three thousand dollars a unit. So we know that it's not a hundred and fifty dollars a unit, and they're bidding it at that. That concerns me. Uh, unless, I know bidding is, is subjective. You, you bid high on part of it, you bid low on part of it, and, and as, as the high bidder over here indicates, uh, as far as he is, he didn't want the bid, so... So I, I, I am concerned about those two things.
So...
Uh, with, if...
Can I answer, you answer on one? And if you look out above there, bud, where it says slip line existing structure, LS one?
Yes.
That's, if you look, there are a hundred and seventy-six thousand, and everybody else is, the highest one is seventy-three.
Well, that's, that's good very well bid.
Hundred thousand dollars, you know, I, I mean, like I said, sometimes they'll, they'll bid high here, low there.
And they are required to do, I just pulled up the emails between Josh, our engineer, and J-Five Construction. And they are required to do contact, concrete testing for the project, so that what they're putting in will be tested to make sure it'll work, and they understood that.
That still doesn't answer my question. Uh, if they're, if they're bidding a unit at a hundred and fifty dollars, I, I don't know that that's, is correct.
That's the...
If it's because they wanted to adjust their bid, I'll, I'll accept that, but I'm, I would vote no on this right now until it's clarified on those two things.
So they said they're using, they did identify where all their stuff is coming from, and they are using...
It doesn't matter where it's coming from.
But, I mean, but they have sources, they, they didn't just pick numbers out of the sky.
Well, uh, what, they did, because a hundred and fifty dollars versus two thousand dollars per unit is, is a lot of difference.
Let me toss something in. I did a new garage floor last month, concrete, a hundred and fifty-five, a cubic yard.
Cubic yard.
Cubic yard, one fifty here, so those, those are real numbers.
Why were the other three, then, then I'm, then I'm a little concerned that the other three have bid it out at, at, at ten times that?
Again, it could be they, they have their own concrete trucks and they don't have to pay, I don't know what, I don't know why.
That's my, that's a red flag to me. And that is, that is a major part of this contract, is the concrete and, and the grouch, along with the reinforcing epoxy.
Right, so...
Now, they're right, they're right on on the epoxy, it is consistent across all the bids.
Right, so...
This particular one is not.
Our engineer did check with them and did double-check the numbers, double-check the sources, and I do have all the documentation for that. Um, so I would say that you can't reject a bid unless they're not a certified, unless they're not a responsible bidder. And we checked, and they are, we checked the references, they are a responsible bidder. So you can't reject this bid. You could table it if you want more information.
Well, I'm not happy with it, I mean, if they have a good answer for it, great. But this project is, is quite a project, it's Mary Elizabeth Street, where a lot of traffic. I don't know why they adjusted their bid to be that way, if in fact, uh, there's a reason for that.
I would just use the example of the, uh, when we did the maintenance facility and we opened the project for the site, site work, and Amron came in considerably lower than everybody else.
Yes.
And Amron double-checked their numbers and said, nope, those were the numbers, and they stood by it and did fine work. And this company said the same thing, they double-checked the numbers, went over it with Josh, Josh said they are responsible bidder. So you could table it if you want to, if you want more information, we certainly get that, but you can't reject it.
I don't care if they were not, that's gonna be a red flag, because that, something's wrong with that.
Okay, well, again, I, I, I would look at, I have two bidders within eight thousand dollars of each other. So I, I'm not, I'm not as concerned as far as a red flag there. And there are two bidders that are significantly higher. But I also know that, you know, if you look at these, we get a lot of these bids, and the same bidder sometimes is low and sometimes high, depending on how much work they have and when they gotta do it. So I, I, I mean, we can get into every number on this, and I'm not really, I, I'm not sure I wanna do that. What's the rest of your feel on that, with what Bud's saying?
Personally, I think if, if the engineer signed off on it, I mean...
Well, how does the engineer...
An engineer knows this stuff, and, um, you know, no offense, Bud, but you don't have an engineering license as far as I know.
I do, I do.
Oh, yeah?
For model railroad. For model railroad.
Oh. Anyway, but, so, I, I just, yeah, the numbers seem odd, but they were, they were justified, so.
Well, it doesn't take an, an engineering degree to understand, to see that there's a problem there with that.
Well, they claim a good number.
One unit is one-tenth percent of everybody else's unit.
But if they claim that's a good number, they stand, the bid says that they'll stand by the number. So, if you award it to them, even if they come in and they find out that it's costing them three times what it was-
And then we, then we have, where are we then?
They have to either stand by the bid, or they can submit a change order, which you don't have to pay.
Well, I'm just saying, that's a red flag to me.
But you don't have to pay the change order necessarily.
Okay.
But, but if I'm looking at your, like I said, if you go up to the, the line four, they're charging a hundred and seventy-six thousand, and there, that's more than twice what everybody else is charging in that same line. So, if you, if you, if you're going to use that logic down there, I mean, I, I don't see, I mean, that, if that, I've bid lots of jobs, and sometimes you, you do a lot more in labor, and sometimes you put it on materials. It depends on how much markup you put on it. There's a lot of-
Well, there's no labor involved. This is materials, and they're saying the materials are, are, are ten percent less than what everybody else is.
This is labor and everything, Bud.
Okay, so, that's just a red flag, and I'm like, I voted against it because-
All right, well, then, then let's go. If, if there's no other comments other than that, all, all those in favors of signing the bids, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed. Four, four, four and one opposed. Motion carries.
At least the engineer will know what to look for, won't he?
All right, next on it is Contract four twenty-three oh one, Roslyn Road Phase Four paving project. The twenty-twenty-three operating budget includes fifty-five thousand, including multi-year paving project on Roslyn Road. Roslyn will be overlaid from Ramsey Way to the end of the road. A total of four bids were received for the project. The low bid was submitted by Glenn O'Hall Baker in the amount of sixty thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Township engineer Tiven Zerby reviewed the bid and recommends awarding the contract to Glenn O'Hall Baker. Do I have a motion to, to approve that?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
They're pretty even, pretty close. Pretty close.
I'll be great spreading the four bids. From six, yeah, yes, that's pretty good.
Anybody have any other questions or anything? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we're going to go with the adopting the updated Harris Township Personnel Policy. The township's personnel policy was written in two thousand and three. The township manager ta, promised for seventeen years that she would get an updated policy written and adopted by the board. Talk about getting it in under the wire, I'm telling you. The updated policy incorporates the policies that the employees liked from an old manual, leave time and callback provisions, and added new policies that are mandated by state or federal law, family and medical leave, anti-harassment, technology, et cetera. It also grants vacation time to part-time employees for the first time. A part-time employee would be eligible to earn four hours of vacation per month. The policy was reviewed by the employees of the township and the township solicitor. Comments from both were incorporated into the policy. If the board is comfortable with the policy as presented, it should be adopted, and I would like to add that to include our, our current part-time employee, we would like to make that retroactive to August twenty-twenty-one.
Retroactive to all employees hired after August twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Hired after August first, twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So, move.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussions on this? I think y'all had a, a copy of it in your pocket.
I have one question, and I don't know where it's at. The, the part-time, uh, uh, vacation?
Yes.
I agree if we have people working with force and loyal to us, we should reward them.
Yes.
Is there a, the limit of time that they have to be a part-time employee?
No, well, they have to be, so, the way our vacation works now is you start earning your vacation the first day that you're employed.
Yes.
So, that would apply to the part-time employee.
Yes, okay.
So, but you typically can't take your part, you take your vacation time for the first six months you're here because that's your probationary period.
So, this is a, this is active toward more full-time, part-time people. There was loyal part, not just a couple of part-time people.
Not, yeah, we don't have any seasonal employees, but this, this is, yeah.
But, but, well, if we did, and we hired the part-time for one week or two weeks-
They would not earn vacation.
They would not, and when, when would we decide that they're going to be a loyal part-time employee for us?
Well, so if we hired a seasonal or a temporary employee, they're classified differently than a part-time employee.
Okay, so different classification, okay. Okay, I, I know that other people reward their part-time people if they stay with them as part-time position for long periods of time. We want to make sure of that.
Right.
My other question is, now, they get, they get four hours or something like that a month, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Now, typically it's a forty-hour week, but they're only working twenty. Now, they take their vacation on which twenty hours?
So, right-
The ones they work or the ones that don't work?
Right. So, right now, our current part-time employee is our finance assistant, and, for example, she was off today. So, she took that, every time she's off now, I'm paid. So, she was not paid for four hours because she's out of town.
So, it would count towards, it would, it would go toward a reduction of twenty hours?
So, if she, her work, her workday is four hours. So, if she had vacation time now, she would have been paid for four hours of vacation.
So, it would be, it would be the time that she would normally work and be her vacation?
Yes, yep.
Not that when she's the twenty hour?
Right, exactly. Her workday is half of our work, is regular workday.
All right.
Any other questions or comments?
Talk to me a little bit about the employment of relatives, the paragraph that deals with marriage of-
Yeah, so that is new to our-
That's sort of a complex kind of-
Yeah, that's new to our policy, and I will say a lot of what is in our policy now, I, I can't use the personnel policies from around the region, so College Township and the Cog policy as well, but that's intended, we have a very small staff, but that's intended so we don't have a conflict arise where we have someone who's perhaps a husband and the wife is the subordinate and the husband is the supervisor, because that's a conflict.
Or reverse of that.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, it's, it's intended to kind of take away those possible conflicts of interest.
Generally-
I just, I just wanted to make sure that that's what we meant, what you're talking about.
Yes, yep.
Generally, nepotism is if they're in the same department or like they're both in the finance departments.
Exactly, exactly. And our policy says, like, if you start a romantic relationship with someone while you're employed by the township, then, and you're going to get married and you're in the same department, then you have to, one of you has to leave.
So.
Heaven forbid.
Who would do such a thing?
Well, we were close.
Stop.
Oh, maybe we can hire Franzen again.
We can hire Franzen now, right?
I'd like to perform a evaluation, page four, stop.
Yep.
I'll move over to the next paragraph with respect to who actually does those evaluations.
Yeah, and again, because we're small, we did put in here, the, the employees always have the ability to come to the board of supervisors for, for relief if they don't agree with what the township manager has done or what the, their supervisor has done.
Is whistleblower policy new?
Is the whistleblower?
Whistleblower, page five, seven?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I don't remember seeing that one. The, page seven, next, number eight, entering township premises without authorization. What, what says we suppose that means?
That means one of us comes in without a key. What we suppose that does mean?
No, that means if someone is-
Is it an employee?
Yeah, that would mean if, if an employee has been disciplined and they're not allowed to be on the premise-
Oh, okay, okay.
And then they showed up on the premise, it could be-
It's a post after the, the activity.
Yeah, they could be.
Okay, okay.
I will say this was a heavy lift, that's why it took seventeen years.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Nigel, Bruce, anything?
Nope.
Number eighteen, I like, on page eight, that's, that's a good addition. The weapon, weapon issue?
Yes.
Particularly what we're seeing now, that's a good.
Does, does the employee parking lot for the maintenance shed count?
Those are not unauthorized, they all carry permits.
All right, anyway, okay.
Smoke-free environment new too?
Yes.
On page one?
Yeah, we have designated smoking areas.
Okay. Here is our document.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, Resolution twenty-three oh six, designate in May as a Bike-to-Work Month. Center Bike has asked the board to consider designating May as Bike-to-Work Month and May fifteenth through May twenty-first as Bike-to-Work Week, and May nineteenth as Bike-to-Work Day, and Center Region Spring Bike Anywhere Friday.
I'm going to jump in and make that motion.
Okay, Bud's going to make that, and, and you got a second. Was that you that seconded? Denny seconded, or did you?
I seconded.
Oh, Bruce seconded it. You guys are going too fast. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number G. Okay, we got that, so, okay. Number G is interim management services. Okay, we better read through this one. Peter Marshall and Associates submitted a proposal to provide interim management services to the township. He will also complete the manager search. His rate will be ninety-five dollars per hour. A copy of the agreement is included in the packet. The agreement has been reviewed by the solicitor, who did not offer any additional comments. Uh, da, da, da. So, we have, I need a motion to discuss this, so, have I, do I have a motion to approve that?
Move to approve the interim management services agreement with Peter Marshall and Associates.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, any questions or comments?
I'll make a couple changes.
Well, that, that, one of the things I was going to say is that we have a couple administrative typos that are, that the solicitor sent that we'll get corrected.
Got to get in the right township.
Yeah, we got to get in the right township.
On the specificity, if you, it says April twenty-twenty-three, we're just keeping that sort of open?
What, what was the, I'm sorry, what was the question?
April twenty, it says April twenty-twenty-three, I wonder, are we picking a date like the last date of April?
Uh, basically, we were looking at tonight when we approved the, the thing that-
Soon as we signed it.
Yeah, soon as we signed it, it's a, it's a goer.
You can mark it.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll sign it tonight, but I got to get the, we got to get the updated one.
Yeah, we'll get, I'll get with Peter tomorrow with a couple of comments.
Okay, I'll stop after I play golf and sign it.
So, yeah, you're going to, that's a good question. You can start paying him the same time you're still paying me?
Sure, why not?
I don't know, we don't need two, we don't need two.
We'll be okay. Well, there's, I, I'm, I'm allowing like a week and a half or so, whatever it is, for turnover, two, couple of weeks.
I would do, I would do like maybe ten days of transition.
Well, you're getting close to, you're close to ten days, Denny.
It's pretty typical to have two people to learn, learn the ropes.
Sometimes, not always.
But you look, you know so much about the ropes already, so it's, uh-
Yeah, but there's a lot of things that-
Yeah. We, how many pages? We had eight pages of transition notes, wasn't it?
Eleven.
Eleven pages, eleven pages of transition notes. So, there's a lot there.
Why don't you make it-
Five days?
Twenty-fourth of April.
I'm going to be gone for a few days.
When, when are you going to be gone?
Already taking vacation.
Step up to the mic there, and, and, no, it's-
Going to be gone.
This week.
Oh, okay, well, then, we'll make it to, we'll ma, we'll make it, what?
Why don't you make it to twenty-fourth, which is my last week?
Yeah. Okay, does that, does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll make it to twenty-fourth.
Yep.
So, it's going to be April, that, that line will say April twenty-fourth.
Yep, okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, hearing nothing else, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At the same time here, we also, I'm going to do this one next, which I didn't see on here. Resolution twenty-three oh seven, uh, this is a resolution that we need to appoint a secretary-
You're out of, you're out of order.
You're doing the citizens-
Where's, where does it, what?
Call for the regular-
Oh, that's down here, okay, sorry. I didn't see it, I thought it was after that one, okay. Also, for the manager search, we decided, that the board decided at our executive session that we would appoint a citizens committee that would, uh, uh, screen the, the first group of applicants to get them down to a, to a two or three level that we could, then the board would start doing the thing. So, we have, uh, uh, voted to, oh, no, we couldn't vote, we signed, but they were going to find, we're going to vote here tonight. And then the members are Jim Steph from Memorial Drive, Kent Baker from Homestead Lane Planning Commission member, Eric Allen from Academy Street, Mike Immel from Nittany Meadow Farms Zoning Hearing Board member, Jenny Evans, East Pine Street Park and Rec Advisory Committee Jenny Evans, East Pine Street Park and Rec Advisory Committee member, Chris Holsworth, East Pine Street, Dottie Delafield, Pine Tree Avenue, Robin Brous, Kimport Avenue, and Candy Watson, Watson Farms. So, I need a motion to recommend that we appoint those to the citizens committee for the manager search.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I got a second from Denny. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to resolution twenty-three oh seven. While the departure of the current township manager, the board needs to take action to appoint a new secretary treasurer until the permanent replacement is found. Supervisor Haymeister will continue to serve as the assistant secretary treasurer. The new appointment will become effective on May first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and within discussion, I would like to move to resol, the resolution twenty-three oh seven, appointing the new secretary treasurer as our interim manager, Peter Marshall. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any comments or questions?
I would just add, the solicitor asked me to remind you that when you hire a permanent manager, you will then have to do this resolution again
Yes, ma'am.
to appoint the permanent manager.
We'll let Peter make sure we don't forget that.
Yeah. Pat asked me to remind you.
Okay. Yes, we, we, yeah, I was figuring that that would have to happen. So, any other cat, questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Jay, we're getting down there. The Bullsburg Fire Company has requested authorization to use the Alpha Center Hall and Port Matilda Fire Police and the members of the Center County Fire Police Association to assist with craft, traffic control at the fireman's company parade on May twenty-seventh. I have, can I have a motion to do that?
I'm forming a motion on that. Hall and Port Matilda Fire Police and Center County Fire Police Association for Traffic Control for the Fire Company Parade on May twenty-seventh.
So, I have a motion and Bud, I have a second.
I've asked that he amend this.
Oh, what do you want him to amend?
There's some more discussion on traffic control, and I don't know if, they might wanna include as needed, anybody else as needed on that.
What do you mean by?
Well, we had a meeting and the off, our company has offered to do a couple of different things, we don't know exactly. There's a good possibility that we, even though that wasn't discussed, that, of Fire Force or some other source there, so rather, rather than make it just this, I think I'd like it as, maybe an as needed word on that.
Well, if you use Fire Force or contract a company, you don't need a resolution for that.
Or whatever, however you wanna put it.
You can just hire them. So, this would cover all, this is because these people need to be covered under insurance. Fire Force brings their own. Because these are volunteers.
Okay, if you want, if, last minute, I, I, look, I'm uncomfortable with that, but we'll go into it.
If something needs to be added on, you can do it in May, you have time.
All right.
Okay.
So, so we're just going with the, with the motion as written? And are you seconding that motion or doing?
Yeah, well.
Okay, we got a, a motion and a second.
Uncomfortably.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next. Allocation of funds.
Everybody's here for.
Allocation of, oh, you got to stay for the whole meeting, didn't you? Allocation funds to the Day in Town Festival. Memorial Day Committee is asking the board to consider allocating fifteen hundred to cover half the cost of the ambulance for a day in town festival. The board gave a similar donation last year to cover these costs. The total cost of the ambulance is three thousand. The committee is required to have an ambulance on site per state regulations for large events. Moving forward, the board may want to discuss if it would like to make this an annual contribution as part of the budgeting process. So, I, I need a motion.
You have a motion, sir.
You have, you're mo, moving, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a sec, second. Any discussion on this?
Make questions.
Do any of you have any comments you would like to make on this?
Just that any approval would be.
You go to the mic and have to say your name.
That's your one.
We wanna get, we wanna get you on television.
I'll teach you.
I'll teach you.
Dottie, you're P V C president. Any help you can give us will be greatly appreciated because we're working on a very tight budget this year. And, uh, the three thousand dollar need for an ambulance for the day is our largest line item on the Memorial Day budget. We've made lots of cuts in lots of other areas, so if you can do the fifteen hundred, that would just be swell.
I think we do three hundred, five hundred.
What do we do right now?
So, right now, you don't do anything for the ambulance. You give them seven hundred and fifty dollars for the six P M service.
Yes.
And then last year they came because, remember, you didn't have Memorial Day, the day in town, in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And then when they, we have to by Title thirty-five, which is the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Law.
We have to have an ambulance here because there are twenty-some thousand people that come to town. So, the cost went up last year significantly, and that's when you first donated the fifteen hundred.
So, basically, what we're saying, you know, in addition to this, that going forward, we may wanna consider going from seven fifty to like twenty-three hundred?
Yeah, you might.
Well, for two different budgets, right? One is for Memorial Day service, am I right?
The six P M service?
Two different budgets.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but we, we can specify.
Yeah, it all goes through the conservancy, and you might wanna think about, just because this directly, you know, we take care of the police services for Memorial Day. We don't charge anybody for that, we take that out of our hours, and we save up hours to get through the day in town, because it takes a lot of time. Um, but you might wanna consider, because this directly falls into the health, safety, welfare, um, and, you know, we're doing the emergency planning with Sean for that festival, so it would be, I think, under your purview to pay for half of the ambulance.
Why don't we, why don't we, we can go ahead and do it, but let this go.
Make, make an amendment? I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. In light of the fact that we received a refund from the police this year, I would like to amend that motion to re, to redonate three thousand. We cover the total of it?
I don't think we have a motion, make that a motion.
You have a motion.
We have a motion?
Yeah, Denny made, Denny made the original motion.
But it's fifteen hundred, right? He wants to amend it to three thousand.
I'm amending my motion to do three thousand.
And wait, a minute, you made the second, right, Nigel?
Yes.
I will second that amendment.
Okay, so we have, we have an amended motion and a second. What do you, I mean, any more discussion on it?
I, I don't.
I, I, I mean, I don't know, can we, can we afford it?
I mean, you.
I guess that's a good question.
We should be able to find, I mean, we only got five thousand dollars back from the police this year, but we should be able to find three thousand, yes.
As far as lawyers, please be friendly, it's still five thousand, we can afford three thousand.
Yeah, and then, and I think that we need to, whenever we get ready to start our budgeting in the fall, you folks need to sit down and, and put a number for us, so when you come requesting it, so we can take a good honest look at it whenever we do that in the fall.
And give us a number that's comfortable.
Right, okay, great, great, okay.
So, anything else anybody wants to bring up on that? Bruce, you look like you're perplexed.
No, I'm not perplexed.
Okay.
It's ready to vote.
I was gonna make the motion.
Oh, it's already made?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other, no, hearing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Always our pleasure.
We'll put you at the beginning of the bud, or the thing next time, I'll bet. All right, and now we'll go to, to number L, which we added, which is the no-mo May. Nigel, you wanna say your piece on that, since that's your, you've been doing your introduction?
Said my piece, the, um, it's, it's a practice that's done by other municipalities, including the State College Borough, to, uh, um, benefit pollinators, um, by not mowing their grass in May. And moving, you know, anything basically disturbing the ground, um, can have a negative impact on pollinators. And, uh, because they're in the leaves, you know, there's things in the leaves. I don't know all the science of it, of course, but, uh, it's a pretty minor thing to, and it's not required that you don't mow, you know, it's just an option that you don't mow, people, so, um, to, uh, to let the bees, uh, um, eat the dandelions, because that's a good source, though, it's an early source of food for bees.
Pollinating dandelions right now.
Yeah.
We have bees, I know.
So, I might just remind you that under Act sixty-five, that Pennsylvania law, you've added it to the agenda for discussion only. You can't vote on anything new that you add to the agenda. You would have to wait and do it next month.
What?
That's the way that law is written.
Yep.
No, it is not, it's written the other day.
No, I.
You didn't, you didn't read it the other day.
I am gonna have to now go look.
You're gonna have to do that. That's why we voted for that agenda, so we can vote on it.
It's for, usually it's for discussion.
Anybody, does anybody have any comments or is?
It doesn't matter when we vote, I can carry that.
The only comment, the only comment I have on it is that, and the borough doesn't have this.
Oh, here we go.
But at the end of May, we have twenty-five thousand people that come to our township. And do they really wanna see, you know, grass this high around the township? That would be my only thing, that maybe we make it till, you know, a week before Memorial Day, because, like I said, we're gonna have all these people coming to town, do we want them to see grass, you know?
And people freak out on Memorial Day, that is the number one thing we get about around Memorial Day.
Yes, so, so that would be my only comment on it, and it's because.
Comments too, really, it's kind of.
Interesting point.
There's plenty of pollinating around right now, we don't need to have a grass grow. If somebody wants, does not want to mow their grass in May, I guess we can allow not to find them, which would only be.
What's our limit?
Some, huh?
What's our limit in height?
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches. It's not gonna get twelve inches by the middle of May anyhow, so.
Depending on the rain, we may not be mowing anymore.
Yeah, I don't, but I can tell you right now, the, even though Bruce says that, the borough employees mow the grass, because if they don't, it, it, it gets out of control, and I talk to Angela on maintenance people. If someone lets their grass grow, the ma, the ma, they mo, they charge them double come in June. So, it isn't a money-saving thing by not mowing their grass. And there's plenty of pollinators around in this area. The real grass doesn't matter, but if you wanna feel good about not mowing your grass in May, good for you.
I'll thank you.
What's your interpretation of this?
Okay, so here's what the law says. Business arising during the meeting. If during the conduct of a meeting, a resident or taxpayer brings a matter of agency business that is not listed on the meeting agenda to the attention of the agency, the agency may take official action to refer the matter to staff if applicable for the purpose of researching the matter for inclusion on the agenda of a future meeting, or if the matter is de minimis in nature, and I would say this is not de minimis, and does not involve the expenditure of funds or entering into a contractor agreement, the agency may take official action on the matter. And then it says, yeah, you can add stuff to the agenda, but you have to post an amended agenda. I would suggest, I, I understand the comment and the suggestion, and I know Pat and Township talked about this, and they ultimately decided not to do it, because it is like a double-edged sword. It does a lot of good, but there are a lot of people that suffer with seasonal allergies, that this makes them fairly miserable, and it makes them mowing, I think the borough learned some things when they did it, I think they did it last year maybe for the first time, so I, I, I would suggest that maybe you punt this one off to maybe the Parks and Rec Committee and have them talk about it, because they had a pollinator project member for a couple of years, and get some recommendations and see what you wanna do.
Well, can we, can we simply unofficially say that if somebody wants us to want to mow their grass in May, we, well, we, we wouldn't find them until mid-May anyhow, I don't imagine.
Well, you could, I will say that this causes all kinds of neighbor issues.
Well, it does.
And that's, I mean, it's the number one, the number two, one and two complaints we get all summer, speeding on this, our streets, and people not mowing or taking care of their lawns.
No, admittedly, our, our, um, our grass and weed ordinance is a little more generous to the homeowner by being twelve inches, where the borough, I believe, is six.
Right.
And there, my dad's gotten a couple notices, and I'm like, really?
What, in the borough?
Yeah, from the borough, in the borough.
You should take care of that.
Hey, it's a good deal.
Well, we, they were just warnings, no fines, you know, the borough's good about that, they just say, please mow your grass. Yeah.
Yes.
What?
That's because someone complained.
Oh, I doubt it. No, none of those neighbors complained.
I mean, we could, in, in lieu of doing a full-on no-mo May this year, right, we, we have all this information, we have a pollinator page on our website. We can put out, push out information, encourage folks to do what they can. And maybe, I, I get a lot of complaints about how early brush collection is and how early leaf collection is, and a lot of that is just the cycle of how we do our work around here, but maybe have a larger conversation next year about, we'll move brush collection back, we'll move leaf collection back to support the pollinators and support the animals that are living within the brush and the leaves, and we'll look at no-mo for next year, but we can put out information encouraging people to do what they can this year.
And I, and I, I think, you know, sending it to the, the Park and Rec Committee, have them take a look at it, I think.
Do we have a motion?
Let Tim talk about it.
Well, we had a motion, but we.
Do we have a second?
We don't have a motion, we have no motion. Nigel, Nigel made the motion to put it on the agenda, that's it.
Oh, okay, well.
You have a question?
Who's that?
That's Tracy. Go ahead, Tracy.
I had a concern, basically, um, being a dog owner, if you let your grass grow that long, the potential for fleas and ticks is unbelievable. So, even if my neighbors are letting their grass grow that long, the potential of me even walking by that yard and having problems with fleas and ticks coming off of that yard, um, it's, it's just a lot higher, so I'm, I'm concerned about that. And also, if my neighbors aren't cutting and my dogs are out in our yard and we're cutting, um, the potential for those fleas and ticks to come into our yard and managing that through the rest of the summer then.
Well, I guess, from what I'm hearing, I think we should just table this for a future meeting. What's that?
We don't have a motion to table.
Well, I'm just, I, do I have a motion to table?
Do we have a motion?
We don't need a motion to table.
Oh, yeah, we don't.
It's a discussion item.
There's no motion.
It's a discussion item.
Okay, we're moving on.
We're not gonna do anything about it.
We're gonna move on.
Okay, so, you like that?
All right, next, managers' report.
Um, I really don't have much for you, aside from, uh, Bud, do you wanna go to the P M L district meeting, and Nigel, do you wanna go to the P M L district meeting?
I do too.
Where is it?
No, no, I'm asking you, do I?
Where is it?
It's in State College.
Oh, yeah, I wanna go.
Okay. Nigel, do you wanna go? It's eleven-thirty on the, uh, eighteen.
Can't we go to Pittsburgh or something?
We're paying transportation.
No, you're going to Beck, you're going to Beck on the.
Amy's new car, we'll take, Amy, you can take us to her new car.
Take the new, last week, take the new Honda.
Yes, okay, anyway. And then, um, the Center County Association of Township officials, do you wanna go to that?
Oh, yeah.
Nigel, do you wanna go down?
It's fifty bucks, what a deal.
Yeah, I wanna go.
Okay, perfect. And then, just a reminder that Monday night, you're gonna meet jointly with the Planning Commission at seven o'clock to check the recommendations from the Village Parking Committee's report and try to get some kind of consensus on some of these issues moving forward.
We'll do that next Monday.
Yes.
First, you talk about item number seven.
Well, that's what, I was gonna bring up item number seven before we moved on, uh, to just let everybody know that this is Amy's last managers' report. Uh, she will be leaving us at the end of the month to go to the foreigners out on the other end of town.
We'll see her at the tonight.
I know, well, you know, whatever. But anyway, so I was thinking that before we move on, I'm gonna let each of the supervisors say a couple of things to you and let you, let you, let them tell you what their experience has been, so. We're gonna start down here, Nigel, anything you would like to say to Amy tonight, uh, for, for, before we move on?
Yes, girl, you're my first choice.
You had, you had to be there, you had to be there.
That's an inside joke.
Denny?
I'll resume my comments to a later event.
To a what, a later?
To a later event.
Okay, later event, all right. Bruce, would you like to say anything?
Expect to see you on Memorial Day.
Yeah, I guess I'm free on Memorial Day now.
Bud?
Well, I, just that we feel like the farther the brighter, we've raised you for seventeen years, and we're now, who gives this girl away? We do.
Well, I guess I get to do the important stuff, I, I just think that everybody in the township feels that, uh, we're losing an asset, and, uh, you know, we wanna say thank you for all you've done for us, and, uh, good luck in the future, and God help those people in back town.
That township beware.
All right, moving on. We're gonna go to approval vouchers, and there's, we hardly didn't spend any money this month.
I move to approve vouchers, transfer sheet, twenty twenty-three dash oh three, for the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Of all the, of the First National Bank ones, the credit cards? I don't know.
Yes, First National.
Yeah, that, yes, I'm sorry, they are the credit card, I thought you were.
Okay, I, I, I've never seen that many, I thought, hmm.
Don't worry, they'll drop off.
Okay.
Can you not insinuate that I'm spending your money?
Nothing, nothing, no, no comments. Okay, cog committee reports. Well, mine are gonna be pretty short, because Executive Committee, we, we, what we did at the last meeting, you saw that. Facilities that we are, don't meet, we're gonna meet jointly with Finance on Thursday. The Pell study, I did write some letters, I hope some other guys did on that road. And M T O doesn't meet till the end of the month, so I don't really have anything to, to go other than that. So, next on there is, Bruce, Parks Capital.
Parks Capital did not meet, and it's not gonna meet this month either.
Keep going, you can get that.
Probably ought to disappear.
Okay, you, you can get down your list.
You know, I'll combine, um, well, Parks Governance Committee met and, uh, is continuing to work on the structure, and we've been talking about getting a mediator or a referee. I think, I think things looking positive for that committee to make some pos, make some real recommendations and, and finish their works this year. Uh, Center Region Parks Authority had met twice last month. Both topics were the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center and Whitehall Road Regional Parks. Things are moving along quite well, there's been some change orders, all the change orders have been of a relatively minor nature and, and as anticipated. Work on the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center has commenced, the, the, the people doing the work are on-site, and there will be some disruption in services there, but mostly they're gonna be open for business, so. You mean, the new building? Yeah. Okay. Yep. Different than the boardwalk? Yep.
Yeah.
Well, the boardwalk, we're still. In discussion. Touch, you all saw the survey, I hope. I hope. Anticipated. So, I think that's enough.
Okay, Nigel?
Public Safety did not meet last month, and, uh, we are meeting tomorrow. Our meeting is usually the day after. That meeting's usually the day after this meeting, and there was very little on the agenda, basically, the agency director reports. And that's it, and Human Resources usually meets before this, uh, meeting in the month, and we didn't meet.
Okay, Mr. Haymeister?
Land Use did not meet, uh, Solar Power is, is meeting Wednesday. Peter and Pam and I met Friday and went over the, uh, final draft of the FISAT workshop that we're doing April twentieth in Hershey.
What about solar power?
That's the solar power.
Okay. All right, Bud, Finance?
Finance Committee meets on Thursday, and as Frank said, it's going to be a joint meeting with, uh, Facilities Committee. Not sure necessarily why, a hundred percent why, other than we are gonna, uh, discuss our capital improvement plan, and we are going to get our Facilities Committee report. Uh, and I'm not sure, I haven't really, I just got this today, my, our, our, Lester's, uh, treasurer, secretary here printed this out, I haven't really read it. But I am going to bring up, and I think Frank will be there, we need to get some policy started on, before budget hits here, on janitorial and maintenance of buildings and things like this that are, they're, are unproportional across the different, uh, different buildings.
Well, part of that, I, I know that I've been pushing pretty hard the last couple meetings about funding depreciation and all the assets we have, and we, we just seem to keep talking about it, nothing happens, so I think, I think that's part of the report that's gonna come out on that. And Peter, I think you're, you're on facilities, so you're, you're, same type, basic thing.
We need to pay our way.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a lot of, there's, yes, okay.
All right, what about climate action?
Climate action met today, uh, there was three different things that it's, I can spend the rest of, look, three hours on this, but I'm not going to. Uh, two things that we, we discussed, I'm not clear whether they're formalized to general form or they're just gonna do it. Uh, a curbside organic collection pilot plan, and they're gonna do that in a certain area, uh, for several times and see what works, I think it's fantastic. Uh, it's all spelled out where it is, they're gonna do it over a period of months, or to see, as a pilot, to see how it goes collecting, uh, curbside organic, I'm assuming it's grass cuttings and leaves, I don't know what all, uh, I know we don't, we don't offer that yet at all, so, I don't think anybody does, do they? The borough does, the borough does, right? And so, in conjunction with the borough, they're gonna see, trying to get a, do a pilot program, I'm a little skeptical, but it's a pilot program, that's why you have to find out whether it's gonna work or not.
Didn't we decide not to do this a couple of years ago?
We did, yeah.
Was it, what did we figure out?
No, this, this, this one we're gonna bring up next, is we decide not to do it a couple of years ago.
It's a pilot program in Park Forest.
Food scrap, food scrap drop-off pilot program. They're going to pick certain areas in the Rent Center region. areas, any rent center region.
Park Forest, Bud.
Well, well, they wanted to come out here, but we said no.
That's the discussion, that's the point, yes.
But it's gonna be an area, they're gonna block it off with a key, everybody can have the, the number, the code to the padlock, everybody wants it, and you drive around and you dump your, your food scraps in there, and I don't know if the borough's gonna handle this, they take them to a digester somewhere, I don't, I'm not, it's unclear.
I, I'm a little concerned about that.
So Shelley, Shelley had reached out to me and said, oh, we'd love to put a pilot, put one of these out in Harris Township, can we do it at your maintenance facility? And I said, the maintenance facility's locked when we're not there, we don't really want people in the yard, and she said, well, what about up in the parking lot area? And I said, there's really not enough parks. Parking up there now, the guys all park up there. So, I was gonna ask the Parks and Rec Committee if they had any idea, if they wanted to put it in one of our parks, but I don't think we really want to do that, because...
There's things, all have to be worked out, all this is...
Has to be some place that...
Pilot program.
Here's the thing I worry about, unless you dump this thing pretty, pretty regularly...
Well, they do, the borough does.
Pretty reg, I'm talking daily, I mean, you're gonna have food sitting there and it's gonna spoil and it's gonna start spitting. I'm not sure I like that.
Well, they, the borough does it now, they, they pick up the food scraps, they take it to a digester at UHAA or at the borough, I guess, and, so, they're gonna, I mean, I, I'm with you, I'm a little, a little bit skeptical, we have encouraged our citizens to compost at home, this at home, I'm wondering how somebody's gonna get, put their mashed potatoes in a bag, put in their car, and then take it and dump it at someplace else, so I, we'll see how, but it's a pilot program, will, will you get it over, if it worked or won't work, then we'll know after that. So we'll hear more, more about it, where it's gonna be, but it's gonna be, well, I think, everybody's gonna get the code to get into this mess if you want it. So that, and that was our climate action now. Oh, and also, we got the results of the survey from the recycling and...
Refuge Recycling.
Whatever it's called, recycling something. Harris Township did very well, we had 53 written comments come back to, on ours, mostly, I think it's like 89% very positive, I have them all here if you want, I guess they're unloadable, you can get on some link and get the link and read them, they're very interesting, all very positive, what was interesting to me, there's a two or three or four single stream, we should look at single stream.
Oh, oh.
And while they'd be saying no, but, but, but the interesting point is, the last study that you had, the UHAA, they said we should go to single streams for financial reasons.
UHAA did not do one, their authority did.
Well, they didn't, they, what the recommendation was to take it to a place that offers single stream, but that, that's gonna need a lot of work, and it's, it's not really favorable. To me, I, I, one place I do know that, that went from recyclable, collecting where it curbside to go to single stream was, was Charlottesville, Virginia, which is University of Virginia, which is about the same size as this, and what they found out is, yes, there are some spoilage in this, but they, the, the new method of, of single stream has brought the spoilage down, and you get 100% recycling, right now we get, I don't know what percentage we get, so, that's something, it, 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 it probably needs to be refined more over the years, but, but the way, way it's going now, everybody seems to be happy with it, we've got, we've got, everybody seems to be happy when it gets here, they're happy with employees, happy with everything else, so, the one thing though is, we've had several comments are, with this, if you go with this, if we go with this food waste, it's $8 a month, well, in my house, I have zero, I eat it all, so, so there's none left, so, that's everybody should, everybody's concerned that if they're fixed, fixed income, they pay that they don't use it, so I don't know how that's gonna work, because generally contract, everybody pays, it all evens out whether you use it or not, so, those things need to be worked out. Do you want anything more, anything else on Climate Committee?
Do you have anything else?
Are you happy with that?
What about the Heritage Museum?
Well, that is, we are opening, it was assigned, down there, open soon, I forget what the date is.
Having an event on the 16th.
What, 13th?
16th.
16th, I wasn't sure what it was.
Of April.
Of April, not April.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, yeah, come on down.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else? I saw, we got a new face up there, Harvey, do you have anything you wanted to ask? Nope, I guess not.
Ask Amy, yeah. Nothing to report on the expense income first quarter, we're in good shape.
No, everything looks good.
Income's coming to pretty good?
Yeah, we don't really have money coming in until the beginning of March, because that's when our taxes go out, so, you'll see that the money will steadily start coming in now.
Bruce?
The finances look okay.
Yes.
Almost, almost. Okay, Bruce?
My turn?
Yeah.
It'll be your turn.
So moved.
How come you guys didn't?
We're adjourned.